Arivolo?
Here.
Brereton?
Here.
Crawford?
Here.
Frank?
Here.
Freeman?
Here.
McGee?
Here.
Porter?
Here.
Ratcliffe?
Here.
Snow?
Here.
Stevens?
Here.
Ten in participation?
I'll make that motion.
I will second that motion.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Crawford?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
McGee, aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
And whereas the International Economic Development Council provides leadership and excellence in economic development for communities, members, and partners through conferences, training courses, advisory services and research, in-depth publications, public policy advocacy, and initiatives such as the Accredited Economic Development Organization Program and the Certified Economic Developer Designation, and whereas economic developers promote economic well-being and quality of life for their communities by creating, retaining, and expanding jobs that facilitate growth, enhance wealth, and provide a stable tax base; whereas economic developers stimulate and incubate entrepreneurism in order to help establish the next generation of new businesses, which is the hallmark of the American economy; and whereas economic developers are engaged in a wide variety of settings, including rural and urban, local, state, provincial, and federal governments, public-private partnerships, chambers of commerce, universities, and a variety of other institutions; and whereas economic developers attract and retain high-quality jobs, develop vibrant communities, and improve the quality of life in their regions; and whereas economic developers work in the city of Belvidere within the state of Illinois, and now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and the city council of the city of Belvidere do hereby recognize May 4th through 9th, 2020, as National Economic Development Week in the city of Belvidere, and remind individuals of the importance of this community's celebration, which supports expanding career opportunities and improving qualities of life. Be it further resolved that the city council is authorized and directed to transmit an appropriate copy of this proclamation to Growth Dimensions Economic Development for Belvidere and Boone County and the International Economic Development Council. In testimony whereof, the mayor of the city of Belvidere and the city clerk of the city of Belvidere have heron to subscribe their names and have caused the official seal of the city of Belvidere to be heron to affixed in this fourth day of May, 2020. Thank you, Heather, for all the work that your organization does for the city. Next up, we have approval of expenditures, which there are none this evening. Under committee reports and minutes of city officers, we have minutes of the committee of the whole public safety and finance and personnel of April 27th, 2020. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Motion by Alderman Stevens. May I have a second, please?
I'll second that.
Second by Alderman Arivolo. Questions, comments, or proposed amendments to the minutes as presented. Hearing not all, those in favor approve. Will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Brereton?
Aye.
Crawford?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously, which brings us to number nine, Unfinished Business. Under A, we have ordinance 490H, a second reading. It's an ordinance amending Chapter 22 and Appendix A of the City of Belvidere Municipal Code. I will entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Alderman Arivolo, second by Alderman Frank. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor.
Your Honor, this is Dan Snow. Could you give us a brief description of really what that means, Appendix A?
I'll cover that, Mr. Mayor. Appendix A was an attempt that was made, gosh, the first time they called it the Bowley Ordinance, that's how far back it goes, was an attempt to try and create a list of all the city's fees in one place. And it's been revised from time to time over the last couple decades. The problem we've run into occasionally is as we make a modification in one of our codes within the text of the municipal code, sometimes we forget to update Appendix A to reflect the changes within the body of the code, and sometimes it goes vice versa. So, the purposes of the majority of this ordinance is to bring Appendix A into conformance with the proper body portions of our actual code, and specifically as it relates to the fire department fees that they have charged. Since the adoption of the ordinance many years ago, for plan review fees for... Plan review fees for new construction and things like that. There is one section of the code that details electrical contractor applications and approvals. We had passed an ordinance many years ago requiring a $50 fee for that. Through a scrivener's error, at some point, that was relegated back to $25. I'm not sure how that happened. It was in a transmittal to the codification company, what have you. But we're trying to bring that back in line to what the department has actually been authorized to charge under all of its budgets to $50.
Additional questions or comments concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing not all, those in favor approve. Will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Crawford?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye, aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Ordinance 490H, second reading is approved unanimously, which brings us to item B under unfinished business, which is ordinance 491H, a second reading. It's an ordinance amending Appendix A fees of the City of Belvidere Municipal Code. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Alderman Stevens.
I'll second that.
I have a second by Alderman Arivolo. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor.
And, Mr. Mayor, this ordinance is very similar to the last one. In 1998, the city code had adopted an ordinance establishing certain fees for corporate users that put additional demands upon the wastewater treatment plant in the form of biological oxygen demand. It only applies to non-residential water users that actually do impose that kind of burden upon the plant. Unfortunately, when we rewrote the pre-treatment portions of our code detailing what processes an industrial user has to make in order to comply with our codes, and it was required by federal law, in the action-woman's process in drafting that ordinance, in our process of adopting that ordinance, while the fees remained within Exhibit A, the section relating to those fees was not carried over in the new code. So, what we are doing actually, I'm sorry, it's vice versa. What we're doing is actually bringing those fees both back in Exhibit A as well as in the new code to reflect the actual ordinance that was adopted in 1998.
Additional questions or comments concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing not all, those in favor approve. Will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Frank? Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Crawford?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Ordinance 491H, second reading is approved unanimously, which brings us to item number 10, New Business. Motion forwarded to the committee of the whole public safety and finance and personnel of March 23, 2020. Motion will be presented by Chairman Freeman. Chairman Freeman, the floor is yours.
Thank you. A, motion to approve the proposal from Arc Design Resources in the amount not to exceed $50,000 to complete the Phase II design engineering for the Logan Avenue rehabilitation project. This work will be paid for from the proceeds of the local motor fuel tax.
And before I ask for a motion, we have additional information to share with you today. Director Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Your Honor. There was a memo that I produced earlier today. It was emailed to everybody. Usually, when this happens, I'd have it on your desk for the meeting tonight, but in this case, it was sent out via email. We did, we got some good news. Last Friday, IDOT issued Circular Letter 2020-11, which announced the Rebuild Illinois Bond Funds for local public agencies. It's a $1.5 billion grant program that will be dispersed to all local agencies within the state of Illinois based on our current MFT formula. And we are expected to get two dispersments per year for the next three years. Each dispersment is estimated to be about $281,000 for a total of $1.686 million of grant money. And the money will be used for, must be used for a bondable transportation improvement project. Our Logan Avenue rehabilitation project qualifies for this grant funding. So, at our next Public Works Committee meeting next Monday, I'll be recommending that the city utilize the Rebuild Illinois Bond Fund Grant for the Logan Avenue Rehab Project. And I would further recommend that we pass the Logan Avenue Phase II Design Engineering motion that we're talking about now with the following amendment, that this work will be paid for from the Rebuild Illinois Bond Fund Grant from IDOT.
Motion to approve with the considered amendment presented.
Mr. Mayor, this is actually a...
I'll make that motion.
Wait, wait.
Mr. Mayor, this is actually a motion out of committee. So, you don't need a motion on the original issue. It would be appropriate as a motion to amend as recommended by the Director of Public Works.
Okay. I thought that's what I just said. So, motion to amend as presented by the Director of Public Works.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Alderman Crawford. May I have a second, please?
I have a second.
I have a second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, will, when your name is called, signify. What? Who is the second?
I'm sorry, are we voting on the, are we voting on passing this, or are we just voting on the amended to have it not be from the local motor fuel, but rebuild funds instead?
The amendment.
What are we voting on, Mike?
Sorry, I didn't know which Mike you were talking to.
Well, you're the one that said we needed to vote on. I presented it as voting on the amendment is presented by that the money would come from the grant.
That's correct.
So, we're voting on the money coming from the grant instead of the source we were going to use previously. Is that clear?
And then we're going to vote again, right?
Yes. So, we have to vote up the amendment and then vote as amended.
Okay.
Okay. I have a second by Frank. All those in favor, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Crawford?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Okay. Now, we'll vote on the amended motion. And Alderman Drella, would you elucidate this to make sure that everyone understands what we're voting on?
The, Alderman Drella would defer to the Director of Public Works so he can insert the appropriate amendment in it.
So, it'll be a motion to approve the proposal from Arc Design Resources in the amount not to exceed $50,000 to complete the Phase II design engineering for the Logan Avenue Rehabilitation Project. This work will be paid for from the Rebuild Illinois Bond Fund Grant.
Questions or comments concerning the motion now on the floor?
I have one.
Please proceed, Alderman Freeman.
So, Brent, what else is this grant money can be used for? Anything that has to do with roads? Anything that we could use the local motor fuel tax for?
This has to be used for a bondable transportation improvement project. So, the total of this is going to be about the 1.7 million. Our Logan Avenue project is, right now, the price tag is estimate is around the 1.9 million. And we have some, for example, we have some water main work that we need to do on that Logan Avenue project. So, our local funds will pay for that portion, and the grant funds will pay for the balance. To make it, according to the Circular Letter from IDOT, the bondable capital improvement is a transportation improvement project with an average useful life of greater than or equal to 13 years is to be considered a bondable capital improvement. So, it's basically a road reconstruction-type project that you would be looking at. So, our Fifth Avenue project would qualify. West Harrison would probably qualify. Logan Avenue certainly qualifies. Those are the types of projects that are required to be done through this program. The monies will be deposited in our IDOT MFT account, but they will be accounted separately. It is a, those are state funds being generated through a general obligation bond issued by the state. So, they don't have the same federal requirements that, you know, previously, we talked about possibly using ITEP funds to fund a portion of this project, applying for a grant for that, for the sidewalk portion. But that was, that would be federal money that we'd have to follow the guidelines for. So, these guidelines are a little bit less strict than the federal guidelines. They're basically the local MFT motor fuel tax guidelines administered by the state.
Does that clarify it for you, Alderman Drella?
So, if we, if we use this grant, which I'm assuming doesn't have to be paid back, therefore, that's why it's a grant, for $50,000 to do the Logan Avenue Phase II, then we can use the remainder of the grant on these other projects?
No, I would, my recommendation would be that that 1.7 million total that we'll receive over the three-year period would be earmarked for the Logan Avenue project. And what that will allow us to do then is to take the $1.7 million of local money that we would have otherwise spent on Logan Avenue, we'll be able to utilize those funds for other projects. And those other projects could include storm sewer projects, could be whatever kind of capital improvement project you, the council decides to use it on.
I could, Brent, could you remind them how expensive those other projects are and that we don't have the money for those right this, at this time?
Certainly. The West Harrison Project, that's about a $2.5 million estimate price tag. The Fifth Avenue Project, along with the 72-inch storm relief storm sewer, that goes along with that project, that's combined, I think it's right around $4.9 million price tag. So, those are some bigger, bigger ticket items that we will still need to get done and still find funding for. But the Logan Avenue Project, as you recall, we looked at many options of that from a total reconstruction to the rehabilitation that was decided upon for the 1.9 to $2 million price tag.
Additional questions or comments?
Okay. Anybody else? I do.
Alderman Porter? Alderman Porter, please proceed.
Yes, I would like to just say that I'm okay with going ahead with this, approving this if it's going to be paid for through the grant, but I would like to make a recommendation that we postpone this, authorizing the $50,000 until we actually have money in hand from the state because we're still... the state, because we're still, again, dealing with the COVID-19 issue, and, which is obviously ramping up and getting worse. So I'm thinking we need to hold onto this money until we at least get the money in hand from the state of Illinois.
According to the circular letter, again, that was released, the first rebuild Illinois grants will be awarded and dispersed the week of May 4th, 2020, with a total, that totaled $250 million. So, again, in the email, the attachment on the back, they have already gone ahead and estimated what the dollar amounts or values are gonna be. So that first distribution for Belvedere is 280, estimated to be $281,025.36. So according to the circular letter, we should be receiving those funds this week. Keep in mind also that the project itself still needs to come back for council to proceed. This is only to do the engineering. And the only reason why we're doing the engineering at this point in time is because in order to facilitate the ADA requirements for Logan Avenue requires relocation of utilities, and in order for ComEd to make that investment of time and dollars to do that relocation, I think they're up between 20 and 26 utility poles that have to be relocated, they are requiring pre-final plans or 95% completion plans. So that's the real reason why we're here at this point in time tonight, talking about this issue, to get the engineering approved, so that we can keep the utility companies moving forward for the work they have to be done. The actual construction of Logan Avenue would come back for council approval.
Additional questions or comments? Alderman Frank?
Brent and Becky, so we will get these payments twice a year. What do we do, we have to pay before we get the other payments, so will we be okay with the money to take care of the Logan Avenue Project without having to wait for that money to come twice a year?
Well, at this point in time, we would be okay. You gotta remember, construction wouldn't be until next summer, so by then, we should have probably at least three payments, maybe four. So that should be able to pay for quite a bit of the project. Brent might know a little bit more about the payout.
Yes, and as that project's completed, prior, if we, if that project is completed, and hopefully, it would be completed prior to the, receiving the final year of dispersment, then as we receive those dispersments, it would just reimburse the local funds that we would have. So, there's already money that's been set aside for the Logan Avenue Project, and receipt of this grant will allow us, like I said, to utilize those funds on other needed capital improvements.
Additional questions or comments? Hearing not all those in favor approval, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Radcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Crawford?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Thank you, approved unanimously. Next, we'll move on to motions forwarded in the committee, the whole public safety and finance and personnel of April 27th, 2020. And thank you, Chairman Freeman, for your presentation. These next motions will be presented by Chairman Crawford. Chairman Crawford, you have the floor.
Thank you, Your Honor. Motion to approve the renewal of XRY software license. The cost is not to exceed $3,250, and will be paid from line item 01-5-210-6020.
Motion out of committee, questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor. Hearing not all those in favor approval, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Porter?
Aye.
Radcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Crawford?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously.
Motion to approve the proposal from Alexis Fire Equipment for the purchase of one rapid response fire/rescue unit at a cost of $180,332. This purchase will be financed through public safety impact fees, $73,172, with the balance $107,200 coming from FY21 Capital Fund.
Motion out of committee, questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor. Alderman Porter?
I have a question.
Okay, first Alderman Porter, then Alderman Freeman. Alderman Porter, you have the floor.
Okay, thanks. Again, I'm, as you know, all for giving the police and fire everything they need to do their job, but, again, because of the COVID-19 thing, and the fact that Becky says that we only have about six months to reserve funds, which really isn't that much when you think about it, when you think about the impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic, and the possibility that could last two years from what they're saying now, so I would highly recommend that we hold up on this $180,000 at this time for maybe a couple months, and just see where the virus goes, and see if we might need that money for, if we have a major issue in the city here. So that would be my recommendation, to wait a couple months before approving this.
Additional questions or comments concerning the motion? I believe Alderman Frank had something to say, and then Alderman Freeman. Alderman Frank, you have the floor.
Well, I originally thought the same way as Porter, that, you know, I was wanting to wait, because I thought then that would give us some time to make the payment. But I've talked to Becky, and that's not a concern. But my other question would be to, now I forgot where I was gonna ask you. Oh, so would they take the time to, like nine months, you said, to get it conformed to the chassis, right? So, Al, will you not have the chassis? You can't use it because it's gone, or can you use it? They don't need the chassis to build the apparatus for the back, right?
The chassis has to be there to have it built.
Okay, so you're gonna be without the whole chassis?
Yeah, it's, 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 it's not good, because there's nothing on the back of it, so it's, it needs to go down to-
Okay.
-get fitted.
All right, and then the second question, is, is this gonna take the place of the Engine 101?
The Engine 101 is downtown. This will be over at Station 2.
Okay.
So it might not only be taking the place of the engine, but it's gonna be-
It's just a different location.
It's a different location.
Okay, and then, so there's obviously room in Station 6 for this, okay.
Yeah, it's Station 2, more than any other engines will be northbound, so.
Alderman Freeman, you had a question?
I, um, I do. So my concern with this is that $107,220 are coming from our fiscal year 21 Capital Fund. Again, with the COVID, um, I don't think we should be spending money out of our next year's capital fund when we don't know what our revenues are gonna be. We're completely in the dark about all of it. And even though things may be seemingly to look better at the moment, there is not one single doubt in my mind that this fall, we're gonna hit a second wave, and things are gonna crash back down. So our whole fiscal year 21 budget, to me, is completely out the window. And we may be looking at laying off police officers, laying off firefighters, and transferring money from our capital fund into our general fund, just to cover those types of expenses. And I don't know that a rapid response fire rescue unit that we have lived without for all these years is of that much importance to do immediately, that something else doesn't come up with Public Works, with police, or with the fire that would need immediate attention that we couldn't live without, that that money might be able to be used better for. So I will be voting no.
Alderman Snow would like to say something.
Alderman Snow, Ms. Tobin had a comment to make in response, and then we'll listen to you, okay?
Yes.
Ms. Tobin?
I have talked to the fire chief about this. So the payment that would take place now would be money coming out of the impact fee fund. So by the time the final payment is due, it'll be October, November, somewhere around that time area, so we'll have a better idea of what's going on. There is still a remaining balance at that time of about $75,000 in the impact fee fund, if we had to use it. So we would be able to take another $75,000 out of impact fee fund, which means only about $32,000 would be coming out of general fund, if we feel that it's deemed necessary at that time. So there is, there are other funds available when it comes down to that final payment, if we need to.
Alderman Snow, you have the floor.
Yes, okay, we've already got the chassis sitting there, we need to do something with it. Otherwise, we've just spent money on something that's of no value to the fire department at this point, except to drive people around. And they don't need that, they need to drive people around with equipment. If the administration is comfortable with doing this, they're the ones that are gonna have to deal extensively day to day with issues that might come up budgetary-wise if we are in a financial crisis and have an issue. I agree questioning it, but if the administration is comfortable with it, I have absolutely no problem with it. We have the funds, the money's there, we don't know what the ramifications are, and we have a boatload of projects in the capital stuff that may not happen because of shortages, that are better off, we're better off getting this piece of equipment, it's long overdue, and we're not doing anybody any good by stalling on this. That's my opinion, I'll be voting yes.
Alderman Arivolo?
I would like to comment on that.
Alderman Arivolo asked the comment first, and then we'll get to you, Alderman Freeman.
I think we should do this project for, for, there's a few reasons. First, we get to retire an old vehicle, we don't know how long that's gonna keep on running. And also, second, you can't put a price on a life you can save with a response vehicle with all the equipment. And you keep on saying about COVID-19, that can also be used for these type of pandemics for responses right away, somebody's having respiratory effect or anything. We can have our paramedics there right away, and that's the reason we should actually do this. There is no price tag on a life you can save.
Alderman Freeman?
So first of all, it's not the administration's job to tell us what there is that we should be doing. It's our job to make sure the money goes where it should be going with the guidance from our financial director. The money is not there, Alderman Snow. The money is coming from the capital fund, and it's not coming until the fall, when we don't know where we're gonna be. If there's extra money in the impact fees that could be used somewhere else for some other type of emergency, and we're not gonna be having to lay people off, then we can cross that bridge when we get to it. Which is why I offered to table this until we knew more what was happening with our funding. We're in the dark here, we don't know what we're happening, we don't know when this second wave is gonna hit, we don't know what's going on, but we might be down to little or nothing to work with here. And to take money either from the impact fees or the capital fund is not smart at this point in time.
Can I chime in for a second?
Ms.?
Ms. Alderman Snow?
Alderman Snow.
I'm assuming that there's probably a time constraint on getting this work done at the given price. And the price is just gonna go up, just like with all the other infrastructure issues, prices go up, they rarely go down. So the $107,000 is gonna wind up being $125,000. You stall on this thing for months on end, so just talking that out.
Okay.
Actually, that's speculation, and any economist knows-
Excuse me, I will tell you when you have the floor.
... supply and demand. And when people are not ordering these things and buying these things, the price goes down, not up.
Alderman Freeman, I will let you know when you have the floor. First of all, I'd like to say something. We've heard a lot of conversation this evening from certain Aldermen about facts not and evidence. Facts and evidence are our financial statements, the actual money we have in the bank, the obligations that we have going forward on a monthly basis, and what the reserve fund and the capital fund actually represent. Ms. Tobin, would you like to elaborate?
Mr. Mayor, we'll comment. It sounds as if, and the finance director can correct me if I'm wrong, that the vast majority of the funds necessary for this could come from the impact fee that we've collected pursuant to our annexation agreements. Those annexation agreements contemplated that these funds be used for capital expenditures, for equipment, for new facilities necessary to serve the areas which we annexed. They were not intended to be used for operational expenses such as salaries and things like that. So to the extent that is dealing with impact fee money, that money really would be inappropriate to transfer that to operational costs. I don't know, as well as the finance director does, whether this money is actually seen within the capital fund, but capital fund monies are not also generally available for use for operational costs. Once they're transferred to the capital fund, they're in a different segregated fund, and for us to be able to use them for operational costs might require loans back and forth, it would have to be paid within one year anyway. So depending on how that money is segregated now, and I'd leave to the finance director at a later date to get back to you on that, but the reality is that capital fund money is there for capital expenditures, not operational costs.
Ms. Tobin, would it be a good time to explain what six months of reserve represents?
Six months of reserve is a very good reserve. They recommend three to six month. You'll have a most, a lot of municipalities that don't have three to four months, and we had close to seven, which is why I was comfortable spending that one, removing that 1.2 million from the general fund to the capital to help pay for Logan Avenue. So you're really talking about close to $7 million, or close to seven months of reserves. So we are, we are definitely in a good place. I'm not saying that there aren't bad things right now, I'm not saying that revenues aren't gonna go down, 'cause I explained last week that I'm anticipating that some of them will. However, I am comfortable in finishing this vehicle that is half-done, so that the fire department can actually use it.
Chief Heiser?
Alderman Porter?
Yeah, I'd like to also chime in with this here. The rapid response vehicle that we're maintaining here is gonna take the pressure off of Agent 10, ladder 150. The front of Agent 10, it's a crapshoot if it's, they can't call available to us to respond to calls for service. Well, Australia's Agent 10 has caused the city $33,000 dollars, needs to keep it on the road. The Agent 10 is out of service, ladder 150 is used to respond out of station number two. The next time, we have to replace a ladder truck, the price tag will exceed $1.3 million. It's a toll, and we could get tollers out of it if we use it correctly. Keep the Agent 10 as active as possible, and less fire departments, we retired it five to seven years ago.
Additional questions or comments from any of the Aldermen on the call? Alderman Porter? Alderman Porter, please proceed.
Okay, I have two questions, one for Becky, and one for Chief Heiser. Becky, you said that they recommend three to six months excess money, and I wanted to ask you if that's, that's considered a normal condition, what do they recommend if you're facing- ask you, if that's considering normal conditions, what do they recommend if you're facing an emergency situation? Is it still the same, or how does that work?
The, the monthly figure that comes out is, it's based on expenditures. So it's based on your operational expenses, but I actually calculate in our annual capital expenditures that we tend to fund on an annual basis. I put that dollar figure into my monthly figure, so, for example, the squad cars that are basically on a rotational basis, I have that dollar plugged in as an operational expense. So, so you got, you want to make sure you're using an operational number, which shouldn't fluctuate much unless we get to the point where, you know, we have to cut operational expenses, which could also be staff or employees, then you're reducing that number. So I go off of a number close to about 1.4 million a month, is what I use.
And your second question for the chief, Alderman Porter?
Okay, thanks, Becky. Second question?
I have another, oh, sorry, go ahead, Tom.
Can Alderman Porter, first, Marsha?
This, this unit, is this going to have like medical gear on it that can be used for medical calls too, or, my understanding was it was just a bumper truck for like small fires and that type of thing? What kind of medical equipment is it going to have on it?
It's going to have a full advanced life support on it, just like what we carry on our bigger, bigger engines of ladder truck. We can use for rescue, suppression, as well as EMS.
You say for rescue? I can't quite hear you there.
No, we have expedition equipment, so most of our rescue, I have medical services, and for the suppression.
Okay, thanks.
Alderman Freeman, you have the floor.
Thank you. So, first of all, this is, we don't know how much money we need in reserves for this, this is just an unprecedented thing, but my question is for Attorney Drowa. Did you just tell me that once we put money in the capital fund and passed the budget, we cannot take money out of the capital fund and move it to the general fund? That it's stuck in the capital fund indefinitely? Is that, is that what you said? Because that's what I heard.
That is a generic version of what I said. You can't take money out and do an enter fund loan. Under the Illinois Municipal Code, you're required to typically repay that loan within one year of loan, or actually, within the same fiscal year of the loan happening. The one thing that I thought of after I made the comment was, we could probably modify that statute with our homeroom powers, but that would require adopting of another ordinance and, and going through that process within order to do that. But, under the Illinois Municipal Code, and again, I asked for clarification, that we'd have to get back to a later date, if you have truly segregated funds, for example, water and sewer funds in the general fund, if the water and sewer fund had to borrow a million dollars from the general fund for some kind of a, an upgrade, we could do that loan, but that other fund would have to repay the general fund within the same fiscal year.
Ms. Tobin?
And just for the record, too, I don't move money from general fund to capital until the project's going to happen. So at the beginning of the fiscal year, I don't just do a sweep to the capital, I leave it in the general fund until we're getting ready to make those purchases, which is what I had said when we passed the budget, still leaving in the 1.2 million for Logan. That movement of money wouldn't happen until a year from right now, and at that time, then you can decide whether you still want me to move it or not. So that money has not been moved, so nothing has been moved for the new fiscal year, and I don't plan on making any movement unless we approve an expenditure.
Any other questions or comments concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing not all those in favor of approval, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye; those opposed, nay.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivelo?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Crawford?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
No.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Motion is approved. Brings us to Item C. Chairman Crawford?
Motion to approve the vacation carryover of five shifts for firefighter Hendrickson and one shift for firefighter Scarpetta.
Motion out of committee, questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor. Alderman Frank?
I just want to clarify, it's basically he's using his holiday pay. Correct, it's, it's what he has coming for holidays.
Yes, it's for holidays. It was, it should have read that way, but it was, we had it as vacation.
Additional questions or comments concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing not all those in favor of approval, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye; those opposed, nay.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivelo?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Crawford?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously.
That's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you Chairman Crawford. Next up, we have motions of building, planning, and zoning, which will be presented by Chairman Porter. Chairman Porter, you have the floor.
Okay, motion to approve the special use extension request for the 1930 to 1960 Chrysler Drive.
Motion out of committee, questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor. Hearing not all those in favor, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye; those opposed, nay.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivelo?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Crawford?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously. Thank you Chairman Porter. Next, under 11, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
I'll make that motion.
I have a whole bunch, I have a whole bunch of motions and a whole bunch of seconds. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is anyone opposed?
Aye.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.